We are required by through your guidance, policy documents, governance policy to provide this on an annual basis. And we do planning here, we're looking obviously longer than five years, but this is our five-year official forecast recently. You'll see that the electric forecast is consistent with what we have presented to the rate agencies as part of our recent electric bond refunding. And the water forecast is something they can see, of course, not that does incorporate the likely expansion of the cabin. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Jason Cox, who's going to run through the two presentations.
Okay, you all have already seen the expired ones, so I will clear everything on hand. But if you have questions, feel free to stop. So we'll start with electric and then we'll move to water. Like Terry said, it's a five-year forecast. I'll actually be just working on lots like six years. So I have our current year budget, our fiscal year 2017 budget, and then five years of projection beyond that, 2018 through 2022. And a couple of the slides will actually have a couple of years of historical actual data for reference. These are forecasts, they should be considered, they should be seen as such, they should be considered kind of a work in progress as conditions change, the forecast will change. But they're our best estimate based on current conditions as we know them. Some things that could change, as you know, the IRP is going to be released in the next few weeks. So when it is, they could change something in here. On the water side, something like the cabin expansion numbers could change, causing a change in the forecast. You will see some things like rate changes that we project. We're obviously not asking for any action on rate changes, which is why we present them. We'll come back for approval closer to the top if they pan out. So starting this way. One point, some times where we have rates on this, our base rates, they are simply currently as a table last of these values all and by the city commission. The ECA, the energy cost adjustment, is a 3.07 cents per kilowatt hour as of April this year. The ECCA is averaging about almost two cents per kilowatt hour. And as you recall, it's made up of several components, SO2, NOx, and mercury controls. Looking ahead, what's going to change with those rates? In our current projection, we continue to have ECCA from MAFs, MAFs has been there a lot for regulations pertaining to mercury control. That began in 2016 and continues. We anticipate an adder for, an additional adder for ECCA in 2021 for 316B compliance. 316B compliance, I know you've heard of before, that's the fish screens regulation for the fire plant. We do propose a base rate increase in 2020 of 9.5% and another 9.5% base rate increase in 2021. So the numbers that you're going to see are based on, based on that base rate increase in those two years. That's required to recover, to cover incremental debt and increase fixed ONM. So there is an ECA increase of one cent per kilowatt hour budgeted in 2017. Actually, we take effect on December 1st of 2016. But as we near that date, we're going to be refining the actual increase needed. So what you see today just has the budget increase of one cent. There are two additional, or there are two additional changes in the ECA in the projection period. There is a one cent increase in 2018 in the numbers that you'll see and a one cent decrease in 2021. And I'll talk a little bit more shortly about the need for each of those. And then finally, on the ECCA, the biggest parts of the ECCA are for SO2 and NOx. A large part of the SO2 and NOx costs are dropping off in 2020. And so the ECCA for those two components is going down, is projected to go down at what? On this slide, I'll start with the ONM, which is actually at the bottom. Routine increases in ONM, three to five percent depending on what the, what the cost is. But the more detailed part of this slide is the capital spending plan. There are two sources of funds that we have projected in this projection period. At the beginning of this fiscal year, there were about $8 million left in construction funds. And we propose issuing a bond of 19.2 million in 2018, fiscal 2018. So those two sources of funds will pay for the things that we have listed here. We proposed in the projection, a expansion of the fiber to the home system for telecom. And then we also have the ESS and delivery, maintenance, and capital projects. So it's important to know that the interest on the new bonds is capitalized until 2020, so we don't actually start paying interest until 2020. And we do have routine capital, an average of about six million, a little bit more than six million a year. Now, on telecom, a couple of notes. I've got a little bit more detail on what we propose with telecom later in the presentation. And we'll be back early 2017 with more details on that. So again, this is just a forecast of how they could, how telecom could proceed.
Jason, do you want us to wait until you end up with questions or how do you want us to do that?
Yeah, if you've got questions, I'll go ahead.
I'm just curious of the 19% rate increase, how much of that's triggered to that 19.6 million telecom borrow?
A pretty good amount of it, but there are increased ONMs.
So you have a breakdown of what's the rate increase would be without that project?
No, no, I didn't run that exact number.
We certainly can run that.
Yeah. Just for my own edification, basically, the previous slide you did, so about, about five cents per kilowatt hour, so the average person uses a thousand a month, that's fifty bucks a month, so the average person spends fifty dollars a month? Is that for, just for that?
No, I mean, the rate, the residential rate, if we do this, goes, goes from 100 and I forget the number, sorry, make sure I get it right. About $110 a month now, and it goes to about $125 or so in 2020.
Just for what?
That's, that's all.
All of it, but I'm talking about just for the ECA and ECCA. You've got 4.92 cents is what you had those first two numbers together there. Is that right, about a nickel? And the average person uses a thousand kilowatts an hour?
Eight, eight or so.
But if they use a thousand, it'd be fifty bucks a month, is that just, is that about right?
Correct.
And then you're going to raise that 2017, one cent?
Correct.
Which is a 20% increase. Is that about right?
In 20% increase of the ECA, it's not overall increase.
Yeah, no, just that, but I mean, that's, that's pretty, for, I want the environmentalists to understand that. I mean, I mean, I mean, that's where it's going, right?
Well, no, the ECA increase is due to the revenue shortfall from wholesale. And that's what we've been talking about, you know, that multicolored line that we chart that you get that shows how much shortfall is causing us to increase the ECA rate. We think it'll be less than, be about a half a cent, not over a percent. So that has nothing to do with environmental.
Okay, that's not the, so that's just the ECA.
The ECCA is environmental.
So, so nothing in ONM is environmental, right?
All the environmental costs, we did the base rate adjustment.
All environmental should be in ECCA.
We did the base rate adjustment last year, the city commission approved it. We moved all those costs to where they should be in the ECCA. So the base rate and the ECA do not include environmental costs at this point in time.
I was trying to see what that ONM is.
Why does that go up three to five percent, ONM and GNA? I mean, if the, if the rate inflation for the nation is 1%, why does that go up three to five percent every year, especially when we can't give our employees a raise?
Especially when ECCA, ECCA are already picking up environmental and wholesale.
Yeah.
That's why.
And the coal's compacts.
Yeah, I mean, we, we, we project a 3%, that's what we use as a base assumption. Obviously, these are just projections, so as we get closer each fiscal year, when you approve the budget, it's based upon known increases that we'll see, but we want to, in average, it's been about 3%. Look at all of our services.
Historically, back the last 10 years.
Yeah, so that would include wage increases for employees, that would include all of our service provider increases, material cost increases, engineering costs, I mean, everything that goes up.
Okay. One clarification, the routine number that we did on environmental, equipment, scrubber maintenance, that's not in the ECCA, more of the reagents, the limestone, ammonia, and all that. So the actual ONM number does include the maintenance on the equipment.
Why would you include that in ECCA?
We just always put it in as a, it's a fixed cost, we have, we have to maintain the equipment. So it's actually, there's some in, it's in the base rate. So our fixed cost, our fixed cost of operation, which includes labor for both operations and maintenance. And we'll put that in the base.
Consuming, yeah, all that.
You could probably make a case.
I think if you really, if you really tried to distinguish what the ONM is costing you, I think you would want all the power in this ECCA.
We can take Kelly, go back to the business. And we looked at all those and then everything we costed in there.
Yeah, but we still have, like, our, we have to allocate labor then between operation generating units and operation air pollution control equipment. Because right now, we lump it all together as fixed costs, we're paying those people to operate the equipment, and it's fixed costs that we're going to have for the year in the budget.
So any capital project, we're using outside labor, is in the ECCA?
It's just capital.
Just re-in the house.
And one final note on this, obviously, when IRP comes out, that could change ESS or delivery capital. One key assumption in here is that Elmer Smith Station runs pretty well as is through the end of the projection period, so through the end of fiscal 2022. So when you see the note about the two outages, I said ESS runs, ESS unit one shuts down at the end of 2019, as we discussed previously. ESS unit two runs through the end of the projection period. So when you see the two outages here, it's another thing that the IRP results could result in a change. So getting into some numbers, retail revenues, you see an increase in 2018, that increase basically stays there until 2020. The biggest part of that is the ECA. And as we've discussed, that's from wholesale losses, additional ESS costs. But in, sorry, I can do that. In 2021, we do see a decrease. We see a decrease in ECA that we're projecting, that's from the decreased wholesale shortfall, you know, one shutting, shutting down, and a lower, lower ONM cost at that time. But a big, big decrease in '21 is what we talked about on the ECCA, the SO2 and NOx equipment being paid off, so the appreciation and interest on those two components goes down. And at very top, telecom, it is a small portion of total electric system revenue, but you do see that it increases as the years go on. Looking at the ECA balance, the projected ECA balance at the end of all the fiscal years, 2017 again is the budget, it's not a projection based on actual, so it's projected to be, or it's budgeted to be a little bit above 10 million. But again, when we come back to you here in a few weeks with a recommendation for the December 1 rate increase, we'll have an updated version of that. The ECA policy actually does require us to, to switch the balance from O2 customers versus O from customers every five years during fiscal 2020. The balance does go below zero. At the end of the fiscal year, it's projected to be slightly below zero, but we do meet that requirement. And this does include an increase we talked about at the beginning, the one cent into 2017, one cent in 2018 increase, and then a one cent decrease in 2021. A lot of numbers on this slide, these are our residential rates, to go back to the question you asked earlier, it's broken down, or these are raised by plans, it's broken down by components, base rates, ECA, and ECCA, the various components of it. But to concentrate on just the total down at the bottom, if you look at the residential rates, currently about 13.7 cents per kilowatt hour total. It gets up to 15.7 in 2020 in this projection. But as some of these costs start rolling off, it goes down to about 14.7 by the end of this projection.
What do you, what do you mean by water by kilowatt hour?
The electric system charges the water system for the power that the water system uses. So that's, that's the rate that ONM uses electric charging on the water.
Okay. So we charge ourselves, basically?
That's right.
We do, yeah, there's separate utilities, so.
I never said water expenses, it's usually a gallon.
We actually have a rate, it's a separate rate that was authorized by the commission and the city commission for the water system.
Okay.
And it's all based on cost of service. So it's just to recover the cost associated with the infrastructure and variable costs to be able to supply that electricity to the water system.
Okay, thank you.
So looking a little bit more at just revenue, this is total electric system revenue, so this is retail, wholesale, telecom, every, every dollar of revenue. And the red line is revenue. The stacked bars are the various components of revenue requirements. And so you see our revenue, as expected, just follows our requirements, a little bit up some years, a little bit down other years. You do see a pretty significant drop off in ONM, which is the blue bar down at the bottom, in 2020 as a result of the projected unit one shutdown. You see a debt service increase in 2017, so the bonds were refinanced several years ago to, to smooth out the, the total debt service, but it did increase in 2017, and it's expected to stay at that higher level through the second period. And at the top, the purple bar, is a slight increase in the city dividend and payment on local taxes. Taking that and looking at only retail revenue instead of total revenue, we felt have a more detailed look at the requirements for retail revenue. So the pink blue bar at the bottom is ESS purchase power. You see that in 2020, that goes down slightly. Total ESS costs go down in 2020, but retail's percentage, share of ESS cost goes up because you have less wholesale sales to offset it, but there is a slight decrease. The red bar above that shows an increase, that is purchase power from, from external sources. So when you go from two generators down to one, you have a higher risk of having to purchase power to, to supply to customers, and that's, that's reflected there. And the other big change in 2020 is the wholesale shortfall. Again, when you don't want to shut down, we have less wholesale length, and therefore we have a little bit less shortfall in wholesale revenue. But the red line shows the same effect that we saw earlier, revenue, more or less follows the revenue requirements. Taking just a couple of slides to look at debt service, by design, debt service is pretty much leveled every year. The existing debt service, which is most of what's shown here in the blue, that does include our projection of savings from the refinancing that's currently on the table. So that, and that saves two to three million dollars, hopefully closer to three over, over the remaining life of those bonds. The green sliver at the top is the proposed debt service that we talked about borrowing earlier. Taking a little bit longer view of that, you see the same numbers out through 2022, but then added five more years onto that, there is a little bit of light at the end of the tunnel as far as debt goes. In 2026, some of that rolls off, and in 2027, more of it rolls off. And so looking at these, looking at the existing debt plus what we proposed borrowing by 2026, it's a whole lot less of a burden each year.
I'll just point out that, you know, 2027, when the debt matures, that's when the debt on the power plant goes away. Okay? And our objective in managing rates is to try to get to that point with the least impact customer, because when we get to that point, as you can see, our revenue requirements drop significantly, twenty-five million dollars a year. So that's what we're trying to do, is get, you know, every time we've, we've redone our debt, you know, refunding to try to get lower rates, we have not pushed out the maturity of the debt. We need to pay off that debt, and that's what our objective is, get to that point where we can pay it all off. But between now and then, do it in a manner that has the least impact to customers.
Of course, our debt service could go up if we have to invest in something like undersunk or something like that, is that true?
Well, we've structured, there are some alternatives, yeah, but there are ways around, there are ways that we can structure such a transaction where the debt will be back-end loaded rather than front-end loaded, and would match up with this debt as this debt comes off.
These numbers, basically, the base department's not doing, having spent a bargain on money that we have.
All it has in there is the $19 million of incremental debt between now and 2022.
Okay, thanks.
And that's the little green sliver that you see.
We talked a little bit about retail revenue, taking a look at wholesale revenue. The red line is gross wholesale revenue. The blue line is gross margin, so that's wholesale gross revenue minus the variable cost of serving wholesale load. And then the green line is wholesale net income, and that's gross margin minus all the other expenses that are allocated to wholesale. So you see the blue line, gross margin stays above zero in all years. That's an indication that in all these years, wholesale is more than covering its variable costs and contributing to the fixed cost of utility as a whole. But you see net income is below the line. So when we go back and we talk about ECA, the need for ECA increase is a large portion of that, that increase, the increases that you see in that, or the cost of the shortfall. You do see a change in all three lines in 2020. Again, that's a result of the projected unit one shutdown. So when, you know, when you're in a losing market like this, having less length does have this effect, improves, improves net income. A little bit more on wholesale, this graph helps explain the previous one. So the red line is the average price of the projected power that we, we think we will sell in the wholesale market. The blue line at the bottom is the variable cost of production. So this is coal, limestone, other variable cost of the inputs at Elmer Smith Station. So again, the good news is the wholesale price is above that line in all years. First part of the bad news is that the margin between those, the spread between those is shrinking. So in 2015, the margin was more than $10 per megawatt hour. So every megawatt hour that went into the wholesale market, it was contributing about $10 to fixed cost. In 2022, that margin has gone to about half, a little bit less than half, $4.53. But looking at the total cost of production, that includes not just the variable cost, that also includes the fixed costs, so the debt, the fixed ONM, the operations labor, those things. So that is above, with the exception of fiscal 2015, that is above the wholesale, the wholesale price. But once again, we see that effect in 2020 and beyond of unit one shutting down. So the total cost of production comes down relative to the wholesale price. So it does, again, up our wholesale margin. Looking at some of our financial metrics, so with everything that we show you with the expenses and capital as we've projected, and the, the revenue with the rate changes that we, that we've discussed, it actually leaves us in pretty good shape as far as reserves. And that's, that's important, and it leaves all of you flexible to, to handle whatever the, whatever the future brings. It's well above our, our minimums and our targets. A lot of numbers on this slide, but a couple of things to note, the, the red number is up about six lines from the top. You see our increase that went into effect at the beginning of this fiscal year, and you see the two nine and a half percent increases projected. The red numbers towards the, towards the bottom, the story here is that the debt service coverage ratio stays in good shape, as do, as does our operating cash on hand ratio.
What do you need a nine and a half percent increase if you're going to, if you've already got 247 days of cash on hand in 2019, you're going to go to 362 in 2020? Why should you need that nine and a half percent? Why couldn't you have less than that?
It's primarily to keep our debt service coverage where it needs to be. Yeah, you're right, those, those two metrics kind of play off of each other, but you have to satisfy both. And without, without the rate increase, you, we fall below our bond covenants as far as debt service coverage.
Yeah, as long as we have bonds outstanding, we have to keep the debt service coverage ratio above 1.25.
And the final slide, I want to talk a little bit about telecom. Red line is, sorry, the blue line is its revenue, the red line is its expenses, green is net income, so accrual basis net income, and finally, the purple line is cash flow, so basically cash-based results. Revenues and all projection are increasing faster than expenses. In 2020, revenues overtake expenses, so it becomes net income positive in 2020. And then in 2022, it becomes cash flow positive. So we're kind of constrained by looking at five years, but the projection is for this trend to continue beyond 2022. And so in 2022, telecom actually starts contributing to the bottom line of the electric system as a whole. But as I said earlier, we'll be back in early next year with a whole lot more details on, on the business plan for telecom, but this is what is included in the projection.
And all that's based on our experience from the last two years.
Correct, it assumes penetration, or the penetration rate at the same rate that we're achieving.
The nineteen and a half million that was going to be required for capital, will telecom be able to pay as they go with that?
Yes, these, these numbers include the.
How much of it's telecom, though? It's not all 19.2, the telecom.
Not much of that. Yeah, it's, telecom's project is actually 19.6, but, but there's, there's a lot of, again, there's eight million in construction funds right now to be used towards that delivery Elmer Smith Station project.
Yeah, so not, the, the potential debt issuance in '18 is not only to fund telecom. There are some other investments that we need to make on the transmission distribution side and at the power.
Did you anticipate telecom, if they need to borrow that money to continue a business, that increased business will generate net income or pay off that?
Yeah, that's exactly, we think that would be.
Subsidized. They want it to be subsidized by the rest of O M U.
In fact, it will be subs, it will be providing a subsidy to the rest of the electric system after 2022.
Other questions on electrics, because this is our last electric slide, and no other questions, we'll move over to water.
On telecom, is there, in this projection, technology upgrades included in the model that, you know, telecom and equipment that they have there, the reason why they're holding this up, to replace the other stuff that's ten years old?
Right.
The thing with the assets probably don't leave for almost five years.
Yeah, this is the, most of this is the.
It operates the electric facility, they were attached to consoles.
But the boxes themselves that go into folks' homes and things like that, we'll recover the cost of that through the rate.
I'm not talking about that, not about equipment, that makes no work.
Yeah.
It's hard, I mean.
Yeah. And obviously, that will need to be upgraded periodically.
That'll be appreciated, yes, to replace.
Normally, that's how we do it. So, you know, I think bottom line here for the electric system is, we've got several years of headwinds, we've had headwinds for several years, given the low wholesale market price. The IRP is gonna, is going to be very important in terms of what our recommendation is for the long-term future of Elmer Smith and replacement generation for that, and that can have a material impact on the need to raise its rates, the nine, the two nine-and-a-half percent increases that we're showing. Current, that's all premised upon operations as normal, operating unit two, at least through this five-year forecast period. So, we'll, when we get with you guys in early December for the summary of the IRP, we'll probably be revising some of the aspects of this. And then the IRP's not looking just at five years, the IRP's looking at the ten-year impact and a fifteen-year impact on rates, not just five years. All right, let's move on to the water.
Good. Looking at water, over the same, the same two, some key assumptions. Our recent history has seen basically a flat demand in water, both number of customers and average usage for each of those customers, so that's what's in our projection. We included an increase in wholesale revenue from ongoing discussions with districts about the contracts, same, same O and M expenses, slight increase each year. The biggest assumption here that could change is the amount of capital that will be expended to expand cabin plan. There are, there's testing going on right now at the existing cabin plan to determine the exact makeup of the equipment that will, that will be needed to expand it. So, that number could change. So, as Terry said, when and if that does, the numbers you see next will include whatever the best estimate is at that time. Going back, one, one key assumption, just as a reminder, it's assumed that the expanded cabin will be online and your credit card accounts here in 2020. And at that same time, Plan A will be taken out of service. So, I'll start with a series of charts that show what our results will look like with current rates, without any changes to the rates. So, looking just at revenues, you see the blue bar is pretty much flat. Again, the retail rates don't change, and we're not projecting a lot of growth, in fact, we're projecting almost no growth in retail, in retail sales. So, looking at revenue, the total revenue resulting from those sales is the red line, that's existing, the existing revenue. So, looking at the components of revenue requirements, O and M, the blue bar is the big one at the bottom, increase over time, existing debt service stays about the same, a big increase as expected as the proposed debt service. So, this is the debt service on that forty-five million dollar bond that we're proposing. A little bit more detail on O and M, O and M and G and A. For the most part, these are increasing at a relatively steady rate, but there are a couple of exceptions to that, I'm going to pull those out and talk about them separately. The gold or possibly orange colored parts, general and administrative expenses, you see a decrease in that in 2017. We made an accounting change to pull our employee benefits out of G and A and put those in the O and M, and so you see a decrease in it and an increase in most of the other categories. Treatment, which is the green line, that's increasing at a little bit faster rate than the other expenses. Treatment, the biggest cost in treatment is chemical expenses, and so we're projecting a higher-than-average increase in that, and it does include the sodium hypofluoride conversion in cabin. So, and finally, pumping expense, the red, the red line at the bottom, you see it's actually decreasing. The biggest component of pumping expense is purchase power, going back to your question from earlier, is purchase power from the electric system. Electric rates are projected to go down, and so the, what the electric system, George Water System is projected to go down towards later into this projection.
The transmission and distribution, is that because you have to build a new line between the old plant and new plant, or is that part of that expense in there?
No, that's, that's just our ongoing maintenance. Yeah. Operation of the distribution system for giving water to customers.
Expansion of the distribution.
No.
Modernization.
Well, we, we don't, we're not actively, I shouldn't, we're not actively replacing wholesale sections of the water system, the buried pipes. We are addressing them as we find. So, like when the city does an intersection rebuild, we'll replace those sections of the water system, but we're not actively going in and disturbing pipes just to replace them. We don't see a leakage rate that would warrant such activities.
Slightly different way of looking at O and M, just to point out that variable costs, the blue bar at the bottom, are relatively steady, variable cost being chemicals and purchase power. It's the fixed cost where the increases are being seen. So, again, with our current rates, days of operating cash falls below both our gold and, as well as our bond requirement. The green line is the gold, the yellow line is the requirement. Again, with current rates, looking at our debt service coverage ratio, it falls below both our gold and our required level. So, with that said, we are projecting rate increases to increase our, to improve our ratios. Now, with, you know, again, a forty-five million dollar bond is a big thing for water, and you can, you can really impact significantly the rating, the rate changes needed by servicing that debt differently. So, to get our head around, around that, we analyzed fourteen different options, fourteen different ways of servicing that debt, and we narrowed it down to three that we want to present today. When we come back and actually request approval for the financing, we'll, we'll have one of these options, or possibly some other one that we evaluate, picked out, but for today, we want to give you all a quarter magnitude of the range increase, of the rate increases that would be needed, and so we're using these three options to do that. So, the three options are a thirty-year repayment term without capitalizing any interest, so that means you start repaying the debt immediately. Option B, a twenty-five-year repayment term, but with two years of capitalized interest. So, instead of, so for the first two years of the loan, you would not repay anything, you would actually borrow the amount of interest that was due during those first two years, and then start repaying after two years instead of initially. And then option C is exactly what I just described, except you would borrow three years of interest and not start repaying for three years. So, one slide that summarizes the proposed rate increases that would be necessary under any of those options. All three require a twenty to twenty-three percent rate increase in fiscal year 2018. So, you see that in the first set of bars. And then all three also require coming back in 2020 or 2021 for a smaller, about two year phased-in rate increase, either five percent or eight percent, and again, either starting in 2020 or starting in 2021. Up at the top, as a summary, is the total increase needed in this five-year period under each option. Option A or B needs about a thirty-three percent rate increase over that five-year period. Option C needs a thirty-six percent rate increase. And the next few slides just simply show some of the same graphs I've already shown, but they show it with the proposed increase rate instead of the current rate. So, in option A, where we do a thirty-year repayment term with no capitalized interest, the black line shows that revenue exceeds our revenue requirements. The red line is current rates, it shows that it's not. Same thing, option B, a little bit different revenue collection cycle, slightly different debt service, but it shows that it exceeds the requirements. And same thing, option C, slightly different timing of repaying debt service, but it, it does exceed the requirements over the, over the time period. Taking a look at our key financial ratios that I showed earlier, we're not satisfied by our current rates. It shows that all three options do satisfy, in this case, the days of operating cash on hand. The red bar is current rates, once again, well short of the required minimum. Black bar is option A, the gray bar is option B, and the slightly less gray bar is option C. And so, all three of those do meet our days of operating cash requirement, as well as our debt service coverage ratio. And that's our last slide on water, so I'd be happy to try to answer any questions.
So, when you're gonna make your decision on your recommendation of financing these bonds?
We're looking at the market every day.
Every day?
But at this point, I think we believe that the market will be more favorable directly after the election.
How long is it for late?
The bond, bond ordinance that was approved by the city commission allows us to wait until June, but we don't, we don't believe that rates will stay low for that long, so we want to get it done as quickly as possible, but at the same time, we don't want to, we don't want to sell into the high of the market.
It's be like a window between the election and central, you know, that, like.
Yeah.
Yeah, holiday season there.
Yeah. So, you know, I just want to make a couple of comments about the forecast here. You know, forecasts are, are something that are necessary for operating a business. We have to know what the challenges are ahead of us in order to try to develop plans and strategies to try to improve, and that's why we do five-year forecasts, that's why we're doing an IRP, to look at ten, fifteen-year forecasts on electric costs. That's our job, and we take it very seriously, and this, I think what this shows is, on the electric system and on the water system, we have challenges, there's no question. And there's a lot of rate pressure as we invest significant capital on the water side, necessary investments to maintain the reliability of our system. On the electric side, the wholesale market continues to weight down our financial performance, and it has a huge impact as we go forward on rates, because anything we're not recovering from the wholesale market, we have nowhere else to go but to our customers to recover. So, that, that is combined with the environmental expense challenges that we have, the number that we've given to you several times, thirty-seven million dollar investment that we need to make in Elmer Smith in order to comply with the clean power, the CCR, the clean, the coal combustion residuals and the effluent limitation guideline. That's not included in this. It is, it is not included in these. So, we have not included that expenditure in these numbers. Those are another challenge that we have. And at this point, and when we get into the IRP discussion in the next month, you'll see that we don't think it's a good decision to invest, continue to invest tens of millions of dollars into this coal-fired generation because there are much cheaper options out there. So, again, the purpose of the plan is to give us something to prove against, and we certainly have those challenges here, and we're doing everything we can to try to find the lowest-cost solution for customers.
So, where would, twenty something present an increase in water, and then whatever's going to be electric, at least, is this projected up to twenty, where does that place the state wide as far as rates with everybody else?
Well, I think it would keep us relatively the same as we are currently positioned, because everyone else faces the same issues, the same environmental.
Or higher generation of water.
On water, you know, right now, we have the lowest rates in the state.
I know, I'm just curious where we'll be.
Yeah, we'll be in the lowest quartile of publicly owned municipal water treatment systems in Kentucky, even with that large increase. So, very competitive water rates, but we've just had the benefit of having extremely low water rates, and we have to make a reinvestment into the system in order to ensure reliability. Just, as I've heard other people in the community say, you know, things, things have gotten old, and we have to replace them now.
We'll have that data when we do our cost of service study, or when our rate increases, we'll come back to the water and the spring and the water mix valve.
Yeah. So, you know, these are just projections, and again, every time we make a rate increase, as you know, you have to approve that, and we'll have to provide the data to justify that increase.
It doesn't look like with the other ones, this thing that Brittany sent out to us all the other day, L G and E and K U are gonna raise their rates, are projected eight-and-a-half percent.
Yeah.
Electricity and coal, or two for gas, so it looks like other people have been saying. Is that any indication with smart meters and costless?
We do know that number, remember what the number is?
Yeah.
Yeah, with the electric.
Water was seven and electric was less.
Yeah, our approach on smart meters is, we will install them when they either pay for themselves, so the savings that we achieve through lower cost of meter reading, data processing, build preparation, et cetera, justifies it, or when our customers demand. And we're getting ready to start a pilot to, we have Calumery Economics, we kind of know where the break-even point is, we think we're very close. We're gonna do the pilot that you've approved, and that'll be rolling out, I guess, in January, on Thursday.
Yeah. Installing how many meters? It said twenty-five, like, twenty-five more.
Yeah, and we'll, we use that, the performance of those to, to validate our assumptions, and then we'll back to you with a recommendation on how we should proceed. But I'm not, I'm not in favor of borrowing money to go put smart meters in that aren't gonna save customer money in the long term. That's certainly not what our plan is. You gotta remember that investor-owned utilities like L D and K U, their incentive is to invest capital dollars because the Public Service Commission gives them a return to shareholders on that investment. We don't have the same business motivation. That's why we do things differently.
There's still some apprehension on the public about the smart meters, too. It's not, they're not totally, the thought that. It's not, they're not totally, with cyber hacking and
Yeah. Yeah, I don't think, everything I read about them, I think those are unwarranted concerns. But nevertheless, you know, there are some perceptions out there that there's some privacy issues associated with all that data.
Do you want anything in this five-year forecast for a smart meter?
No. And again, my view is if those investments make economic sense, we'll make them. If they don't make sense, we won't recommend them to you.
At the, one of Mr. Planchin last time, last week, you mentioned that after January or something, there'd be a presentation on possibly the use of solar power. Is that going to be included in the IRP next month?
It is not included in the IRP because the screenings are showing that the solar option is a more expensive option than the other options that are available. And the solar, practically speaking, we could never generate all the energy we needed for the city of own world with solar arrays. The cost would be astronomical, because the land needs would be astronomical. But what we are doing, we have a team that is putting together detailed cost analysis and rate impacts associated with several approaches to integrating solar into our mix on a smaller scale. And we'll be presenting to those, those to you in the first quarter of next year.
That's great.
That's a, to me, that's a policy decision that the community needs to make.
Sure.
I believe it's going to cost more money to ratepayers to integrate solar. And if the community wants to do that, we can do it. It's just going to cost.
Man, that's a small solar farm of size 64.
Those are being put in by the co-ops up there.
Hoosier Energy?
Hoosier Energy is, one of them is a Hoosier Energy project. The one that's further east, over towards New Albany, is owned by Harrison County RMC. They're both Hoosier Energy distribution cooperatives.
Is Vectren putting one in, too? Vectren or Hoosier Energy?
I don't know. I could not put an idea with that. There is one up I-69, the new part of I-69 that you can see. And that one is actually being put in by Indiana Municipal Power Agency or one of its members. In all cases, the decision behind making those investments has been a public policy decision, not an economic decision.
Which region of media? It seems like the communities that are doing, like the community solar project or whatever, they all seem to be excited about it, but what you read in the media.
Yeah, but, you know. Well, I mean, from an economic development perspective, to the extent that you're marketing your community as a progressive, forward-looking community, there's some value to having a solar generator in your community. It's a perceptive value. It's not an economic value. But again, that's a public policy issue that will be brought to you, and then we'll look to your guidance as to whether you want us to take it to the city commission for consideration.
I think it's good to look at it.
Yeah, at the same time, KYMBA is also doing an analysis of solar and wind and other types of renewable resources that we'll have access to early next year as well. So there's a lot of data out there. The one thing about solar, the cost of solar panels keeps coming down. And, you know, it's projected over the next 10 years to even drop further. So it's kind of one of those things, if you wait, the longer you wait, the cheaper it becomes.
So the longer you wait, that you lose that subsidy, the federal subsidy.
Potentially.
Potentially.
I mean, what Congress has done is they keep re-upping subsidy. And as long as they will continue to provide that subsidy, then all of us as taxpayers continue to provide an incentive to developers to build those types of generators. So are there any other questions about the
Nice job.
And Jason and Lynn and her team have done a lot of good work on this. We were getting, I'm just really pleased with the tools that we're developing to be able to do these scenario analysis, like on the rates here for the water. We can very quickly run another scenario and just see what the effect is on all rate classes very quickly. So really better.
Coming up with 14 options tomorrow.
Yeah, we'll wait till you see the IRP. The IRP, how many options? It's thousands.
We're going to whittle it down.
Thousands. Thousands of iterations.
This will give you the top ones.
But we do, we completely run all the analysis through the computer models to make sure that we're not missing a combination of options that would result in a lower cost. I have nothing further, Mr. Chairman.
I wish we would have.